School committee meeting of March 23, 2021. This is being recorded on SMAC for future viewing. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, we do not have anybody sign up for public comment. Hey, Joe?
Are you sure that there's someone out there?
Hey, Joe?
I don't know. Let me check.
Thanks.
Joe likes to double check.
I saw it.
We're good? Okay, thank you.
Positive.
Very good. So we have the superintendent update. I'm going to hand it over to you, Dr. Marcus.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Try to be brief. We have, in the last week or so, we've had a whole bunch of DESE, DPH, CDC kinds of changes that we've been working through. So wanted to let folks know. The CDC changed its guidance for classrooms from six feet to three to six feet. So that's in alignment with where we're at and where we're going for April 5th. So that's great. The governor of Massachusetts changed the travel restriction or order into a travel advisory. So that means that if folks are traveling, if it's under 24 hours, then there's no harm, no foul at all. And if it's more than that, then there's the advice to either get tested or to quarantine. We're going to go with the advice piece of that moving forward. So that we're interpreting it as not a mandate anymore. Just in the last day, we've had a couple of things that have come up. The MIAA put forward some new guidelines about spectators at sports. So some of that we're still trying to figure out. One piece that the Hockamock League met today and agreed on was the ability for seniors to have, if you're, so far, if you've been a guest at another school, you haven't been allowed to go in at all. No visitors, spectators. So now, the Hock League has agreed today that if you're a senior visitor, you can have two spectators come and view the sport live. There are other kinds of shifts that MIAA was talking about in terms of having more people in some of the indoor venues and things like that. It just came out yesterday, so folks may have seen it. And what I would ask is give us a chance to figure all that out in the next few days. And then the other piece that came out yesterday was about graduations. And also, we're going to need some time to figure that out because it was quite a lengthy document and had some things that may work for some communities and some things not for others. But essentially, it will allow us to have an outdoor graduation, which is great. So that's exciting. That also brings up the idea of having a rain date because we've not been outside before. So talking to Ms. Miller about that and looking at a rain date for our outside graduation. But we'll be able to have an outside graduation this year based on those new wider restrictions. So.
So can I just ask? We've had graduations outdoors normally, right?
Yeah, but if it rains, we bring it inside that day.
Right, no, just because you had said that we have, this will be the first. So is it?
Yeah, since we can't, yeah, so we won't be able to have an indoor graduation because of the restrictions still. So you're still not going to be able to get the number of people you can at an outdoor graduation.
Yeah.
So that works. So we can do that. That means that if we, if it rains, we're not going to be able to do it that day. So we're looking at potentially like the Sunday of that weekend in the afternoon.
So we're looking at outdoor venues as the outlier versus indoor would be the standard going forward, as in the past, outdoor was the standard for the district.
Right. I think Ms. Miller was really hoping to have the indoor as kind of the standard going forward and the outdoor being the second choice. But for this year, because of the restrictions, it really needs to be outdoors, which is good because it allows us to all be together and to have family. We would have tents, but I don't know that the tents would be in that area of the football field. Couldn't put them on the, couldn't put them on the turf.
Oh, we can't put them on the turf?
No, no, because you'd have to spike them in and all that.
Gotcha.
When?
No, don't spike the turf.
No, so and they're actually planned to be out on the backside of the high school. But we might be able to use them for something.
Gotcha.
Sorry. Thank you.
No, that's okay. So some nice news at our last meeting. We had that long meeting and we had one of our amazing guests was Anish, who was going to be putting together the outdoor classroom at the Daw School. The owners of Camp Westwood saw the meeting and are donating $1,000 to Anish to make it possible for him to put that together. So that's really cool.
Yeah. It's amazing.
They're supporting his project.
That's awesome. Great job, Camp Westwood.
So thank you to them for that. And then.
That's awesome.
A couple other quick things. One of my goals that we'll talk about is about communication. I'm excited that there was a project that we've been trying to get going for over a year. And I'm pleased that Dr. McGee and his team have really taken that and run with it and are looking at a new platform for our website that will also work better on phones. So I think most of us are used to, you know, looking at information on phones and that platform will be really exciting, I think, and will be an important next step to also integrate. We talked about calendars and things like that. So it'll be a nice new communication piece that they're just getting off the ground this week. And last thing is about MCAS. We talked about that last week. We had the commissioner's update today. And lots of questions about MCAS from a number of people. I don't know that we got any great answers. Mr. Ford and I sat there shaking our heads with the typical, well, we'll let you know kind of thing. But we, what we did hear is that grades three to five is still being planned, is still being, the window for it is early to the end of May. Our folks are planning to do, to start mid-May on that in grades three to five. Grades six to eight is still TBD, still to be determined and not clear. He did sort of make a commitment that six to eight would happen. And then for grades 10 and 11, even more of a TBD, just not at all clear if that's actually going to take place or not. So we're prepping for it and we're getting ready for the possibility of those happening. But I wanted to let you know that just today, we sort of got additional information about that. And the other thing that we talked about was, does it count or how does that count? And he clarified that grades three to five would really be, again, for the purpose of assessment for each student and not about, you know, doing that school comparison or annual yearly progress or any of that stuff, so.
Did they address the graduation requirement component from high school?
To the extent that this year's graduates will, if they haven't passed the MCAS yet, will use what's called a CD.
Okay.
So I can jump into this. So basically, what they're going to do is allow a class that's equivalent to the MCAS. If they pass the class, it counts in terms of meeting their.
Competency determination.
Competency determination, yeah.
Sorry.
And so what happens moving forward, because there is going to be, you know, rifts in the data, and it's something that we could do in the past as well, like when I was a principal, is you can, if you don't make the cutoff score in the future, like when we move into the, like 2022, 2023, you will have the capacity to hit a lower threshold or you can put in a proficiency plan for a student to meet the requirement. So kids moving forward over the next couple of years don't have to worry about absolutely passing the MCAS.
Right.
Okay.
There's other venues to meet it.
Yeah.
And it was interesting also because he talked about an accountability waiver for the state.
Right.
And we're, you know, we expected that to come through, but then, you know, I spent a couple hours trying to actually find it in writing and we've been unsuccessful. But that should address people's concerns about how the data is going to be used in terms of school districts and kids and everything else.
So I'm going to ask, when we had the last meeting, this was on the agenda, and we talked about the fact that we, as a school committee, may consider putting through a waiver request just because we received correspondence from an individual in the town. And Katie, I know that you had mentioned your thoughts or feelings around MCAS and you wanted to know, how was it being used so that we could at least talk about that a little more? Because we don't want to put kids through any more than we have to this year. It's been a really tough time. And if the MCAS was being used to, you know, you can't graduate or there's cons towards this, it was like, we understood?
Yeah, we wouldn't want that to go forward.
And so what we've seen with this particular commissioner, it's a very different commissioner than we had had in the past. And he seems very in tune, but, you know, he'll tell you, you know, a lot of people talk about, you know, we need to have the MCAS waived or, you know, the federal government's not going to allow us to do that. Last year, they absolutely allowed us to go ahead and not give the MCAS. But because it's part of federal law, and if you accept federal funding, which a state accepts billions of federal funding, you have to actually be in compliance to qualify for those funds. You know, the new administration said, we're not going to allow you to waive your testing because you need to do it to maintain the integrity of the testing system. We want you to have feedback on where your kids are at to help target, you know, your interventions moving forward. I understand all that. But he also committed to decreasing the rigor and the amount of time that we allocate to the testing. So that while we'll be able to maintain the integrity of our testing system and get good feedback on where our kids are at and schools are at, you know, it's not going to be something where we're putting in the same amount of time and resources as we have in the past.
Right.
So it seems like a reasonable accommodation, given the circumstances.
Can I ask one question? So I know that fifth grade MCAS usually is used for sixth graders to go into certain classes for a sixth grade, and then that starts their secondary. Is that going to still, are you going to, is certain public schools going to do that for the fifth graders when they have to take that test? I don't think that that should be something to gear towards what they're doing in sixth grade.
I'm really glad you said that. That's a good point. So I think we need to make sure that that's not part of any kind of.
Have you guys started talking about it at all, like Mr. Ford?
So the data that we've looked at so far is we have our second round of STAR 360 data. And we also have the NSGRA, which is our assessment used to determine somebody's reading level that lines up with our bookrooms and our elementary programs. So we, I mean, we've got a pretty good idea where our kids are at. Overall, in terms of proficiency, I'm going to say 60% of our kids are scoring where we want them to score. And when we look at the reading levels, you know, you see, you can see where the kids are at with regard to where they would be in a normal year.
Did you say 60%?
I think it's about that.
Okay.
But we can absolutely determine, and this would be compared to a normal year, which I think is a spectacular number, but we can absolutely determine which kids are going to need help and which kids are excelling. You can look at different classes and the breakouts of the classes. And we can, and we can target interventions. I mean, we've already talked to specific principals about what they need to move things forward, about what we can put in place, what we can help them with. You know, kids you want to target over the summer or different things we can put in for next school year.
How will that be used for the fifth grade going into sixth, I guess? Is that?
Yeah, the STAR 360 is not the same as the MCAS. So if you're going to take the MCAS scores and put them.
We wouldn't use that for making that determination.
Okay, so that's.
What we have in the past.
Okay, so we're not going to.
It's a really good point. I think we need to make sure that those standardized scores are not used because it's too complicated.
Well, it is. And I mean, really, looking at, the teachers are going to know, you can, I mean, you can identify kids for advanced coursework. The teachers, I mean, they see the work. They know as well as anybody else. I mean, the reason a lot of school districts use like a standardized testing piece is because it helps remove some of the subjectivity.
I'm confused.
But in this case, I mean, teachers absolutely have the capacity to.
I'm a little confused. I apologize. So the MCAS was being used for, I didn't know this.
It was one of the factors.
It was one of the factors that was being used for students that were going into sixth. So we're saying that that's not going to be the case for next year because the MCAS, obviously, we know there's a lot going on. But STAR 360 may be the tool, is one of the tools that would help with identifying.
I personally?
Yeah.
I think a teacher's going to know who has the capacity to do the work. I think teachers in this case, because STAR 360, don't forget, we don't have another year of data. I mean, this is our first year looking at it. We have an initial benchmark. We have our second round. We'll have another round at the end of the school year to gauge where we're at. I mean, I, I mean, could it be a factor? Yeah, it could be a factor. But I think generally, under these circumstances, the teachers that have worked with the kid for a year, that have seen the quality of work, have seen how they persevere, are going to have a very good read on who can step up to the challenge of advanced coursework.
Okay, sorry, I'm just trying to remember this because last week, this is kind of flowing over from last week. So I appreciate that you gave us an update, Dr. Marcus, and you followed up. What were the grades of STAR 360 were implemented on? It was not fifth, right?
No, it was third through sixth.
So third through sixth is doing STAR 360. So they've all had a second round of testing?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, sorry, I just was.
That's okay.
Okay.
So, but you made a really good point. So I think we just take that under advisement.
And of course, the teacher's recommendation is key, but I just know that in the past, the MCAS has been one of those factors which I think would be not beneficial for the child if that would be one of, I think, the teacher's recommendation would go much further than the MCAS scores. Just my two cents.
No, it's good. And it would be a tough year to, I mean, it's good to have the assessment and it's good to see where the kids are at. But we have to recognize that it's going to be a very different, very different score. The other thing is it's only half the test. So one of the things that Mr. Ford mentioned is that in order to reduce the amount of stress and time and all that, it's only either one day or a day and a half.
Oh.
So it's, so it's a much shorter experience, too.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead. I just want, I feel like you need to, because of this being such an uncertain year and maybe changing the standards of what you've looked at in the past, maybe there needs to be a specific communication to the parents of those students about, this is the way the methodology was in the past. However, this year, you know, this is, quite frankly, it's going to be more subjective and people might have issues with that. There's issues either way you do it. But also maybe to invite the parents with a dialogue where they might say, you know what? Because this happened in our family, my child was absent more than usual. Or this was going on or whatever, or I wasn't able to supervise where somebody else had an parent. So you might get to have some inequities there, but maybe if you disclose it upfront and if the parents want to say, my child wasn't chosen, but actually, I know my child can do better and can excel, but this was these, all these factors going on this year. My child learns much better in person. They were doing great the prior year, so I'm still going to try to get them waived. And just so you have that dialogue with them, I think, other than being surprised by what the results are, it might get a better result.
Just so they know how it's going to go.
Yeah, I think this is great information. I'll be honest, like, as a parent, if I wasn't getting this information firsthand, I wouldn't know what to expect or how to prep the students or my children. So maybe we can start getting communication out from a district perspective and just let everybody know what MCAS is going to mean this year, how long it's going to be, the changes. In that way, there's maybe a weight that's lifted off some of these families and children.
Would the eighth grades, is it similar recommendations from the eighth grade teachers for the ninth grade classes, for lack of a better term? I know in the past, a teacher, say a math or a geometry teacher, had to recommend that that student go on to trigonometry or calculus or whatever. Is that also still continuing?
I think the recommendations would definitely still continue, the use of MCAS.
No.
Right?
Because the classes are different.
Yeah. But I think the recommendations would still be part of that, yeah. But I, to your point, I think it's good to get something out. It's been such an unknown, and we keep getting this notion of, you know, we'll let you know, we'll let you know. And even today, there was this sort of slight hint that, well, maybe we won't do anything. And it's like, wait a second. So, so, but I do think, you know, sending something out at least to say, here's where we're at right now.
This is what we know.
Yeah, and we'll let you know.
I think even if it's minimized and it's like that day and a half or whatever, that's such a big deal. Whether they, other things are changed, yeah, that is such a big deal.
Right.
Especially with folks knowing that there were some dates that are out there and now that's going to potentially change and communicating that out is huge.
Okay.
Joe, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Wow. Sorry, I know you were in the middle of your update when you started out.
No, that's okay. That was, I finished with that because I had a hunch that we were probably going to talk more about it, so.
I have two questions from your update. Is that okay?
Sure.
The MIAA, all these acronyms, tongue twisters. Can Mr. Donahue please send us what came out of the MIAA earlier on in the school year? He presented to us and asked for us to take a vote for sports in our participation and kind of noted that everybody in the Hockamock is going in this direction, et cetera. It would be nice to see what the Hockamock is looking at and what the MIAA came out with.
Yeah, and it's not, and I think the Hock League, it sounds like they talked today, the ADs, the athletic directors, and came to that decision about the seniors. But it's pretty clear that they didn't really get into, or didn't come to a decision about some of these other things.
Right.
So.
I'd just like to know what it is. We had to make a pretty hard decision earlier in the school year around that. And if things are changing or lifted, it would be nice to know, just to read. And if we can ask him questions via email around it, it'd be nice.
Sure, sure. I'll have him send that.
And I think for folks that are watching, they can go on the MIAA site.
I'm thinking they have the communications for the parents.
Here we go.
Yeah, I think it's just, things are changing.
Right.
And as they get lifted, while some folks still might have a, you know, feeling of not being comfortable, we also want them to know that things are changing. So if they see something different in a building or outside, that they know that it's because there's new guidelines.
Right, good point.
Yeah. And then the only other thing was with the new website platform. Currently, the platform that we use, I would 100% agree. I would say, thank goodness, you guys are looking at a new platform. I just wanted to say that. It's really hard to find information on the current one.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, like really hard. Now, is that going to be a cost difference from the other site that we use? Is it, how does that work?
There's an initial setup cost that will be different. And then, moving forward, I don't think it's, I don't think it's much different between the old site and the new one.
Great.
Yeah.
And I'm really excited to hear that.
Yeah, it's just been, I mean, it's, before I even started, it was one of those things where I was like, we could definitely do better.
Yeah.
And we've sort of had stops and starts with, you know, getting, getting a real look at other companies, other vendors and what they might be able to do. And this was that place where it was just like, enough, we just need to make a choice. And so Dr. McGee and a group of folks, you know, really dug in, looked at what the sites were that were out there that other districts are using that are really effective. And I think they found something that is really good. And again, what I like about this particular company is their focus is on small devices, so on phones and things like that, as opposed to sort of the more traditional website, so.
No, it's great. That was it, sorry. I just didn't want to cut you off at the beginning, but then we started to call a jump in, so.
No worries.
I was like, okay, thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda under new business is school committee policy review of the policy BE, JEB, and JJA. Mr. Ford, if you don't mind?
Sure. So the school committee's policy working group did meet and we looked at a number of policies. The MAS C did come out with some recommendations for changing some of their model policies with respect to COVID and its impact in school districts. And I'll give you an example, their mask policy, they wanted to change the language from requiring masks for grades two through the high school and revise it back to kindergarten when we looked at our policies. Basically, everything that we had put in place is still in effect and didn't need any revisions. We did, we did make three minor changes to languages, providing clarification, and they would be policy BE, JEB, and JJA, which you have in your packets. You know, just minor changes in terms of clarification of expectation. Most of the policies that the MAS C had recommended changes to, like I said, we had already in our initial policies addressed the current, or they have now. So, and the policies were in fact in the packet.
And we were supposed to put these in at the last meeting, but unfortunately, we didn't get to them or were able to do it. And then since, the MAS C sent the mask one. So this would be, we want to review, discuss, and then talk about it and then potentially vote so that we could get these up on the MAS C site as soon as we can. So I'll go down at, I'll start at Joe first. Nothing?
Nope.
Wow, this is going to be one of those quiet nights down that end. Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, I'm good.
I'm fine.
Okay, great. Okay, so Joe, would you mind making a motion?
Yeah, are we?
Yeah, we want to get these.
Giving the reading and reviewing and all that crap and just do a motion to pass them?
Yeah, not that, yeah, let's, yeah, okay.
Make your motion to approve school committee policies BE, JEB, and JJA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Ford, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Getting those, then we're good. And I was super excited that the mask policy, when it changed, we got the email from MAS C that we were ahead of the curve on that, too, because we did make it all grades and when they were recommending it, a little bit older up. So again, that showed that we were prepared. So it was nice. Old business, we have the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. So it gone up and gotten feedback from everybody and just going to walk through and provide feedback in this meeting. So on a couple of the goals that you had set, there's just a couple of questions, if you don't mind, Dr. Marcus, and then I'll give you a little bit of feedback. So for the first professional practice goal, the majority of the folks had requested that be marked off track so that you could complete some of the courses that were, you were going to do. So that gives you time to complete that item, because I know you didn't get to do them.
Well, yeah, and let me clarify. So I did, Mark, whatever, that's, there are two courses that I started back in February, one through Harvard and one through, I forget what it's called, Coursera. And so those are, and I, once those are done, I'll give you the information.
Perfect. How are they? Are you enjoying them?
Good. You know what one of them is, is about business writing.
Ooh, I took that one.
Well, at your suggestion, I thought that was a good idea. So, and that's actually been really good.
That's great.
And the other one is more broad-based leadership based on the work of Ron Heifetz.
Yeah. Very cool.
Yeah.
All right. So there was that component and that the, the most feedback, so feedback would be, yeah, you could just finish whatever courses and then we can obviously get to those. We know they're started and that would be great. And we appreciate your efforts with that.
Sure.
For number two, the student learning goal, this is around the implementation of STAR 360 coming out of the triennial plan. I have the triennial plan. I've got, well, feedbacks, everybody was wonderful. Thank you guys for all your feedback. This was another item where folks had felt that perhaps this is off track right now in terms of STAR 360 being rolled out to a couple of grades. And hearing that the second wave of things are going on, that's great. But we were hoping to have more grades rolled out. And what, that's what the impression was that we thought was going to happen with STAR 360. So maybe you can help us understanding a little more on that, if that's.
The good news is that we are actually expanding the assessment system so that it's going to go through eighth grade as well. So I don't know that we're going to be able to get to that this year, given the time constraints, but it's, but it's something moving forward that we had hoped to be able to do, but given sort of financial constraints and things like that, we kept it to the smaller groups. So, and again, that STAR 360 is part of the overall goal of expanding extended school day and extended school year program. So that's, so that's still an important piece of that.
Yeah. So there was that component of feedback that we feel it's off track because it wasn't rolled out to the grade, the grade levels that we were expecting, we had the expectation for. So that would be that one as well. And then for the district, ugh, it's really hard to talk with masks on.
Yeah, okay.
Being in a building and, yeah, you get all hot in here. So the district improvement goal is number three, the communication component. So it was nice to hear that you're looking at the website the past two years. One of the goals that we had was the, around, was communication, but also the calendar and the website. So it's nice to see that it's finally coming to fruition. So we agree with the status of what, where that is. Then on item number four, just reading this one. This item, just looking at feedback. So we would just like, you know, so this item too, we would look at, oh, it's off track right now. So we'd agree with that. In terms of working through that with Kathy Piattelli and continuing to communicate to us the status of things with that. And then we'll continue to, you know, give feedback to Kathy on that item.
Okay.
So, makes sense. So that one's off track. Then on item number five, we agreed with that one with the, the school-based ELL program. One key component of feedback for that was that it would be beneficial, not only to the school committee, but to the public, that a presentation was made by the director of the ELL program so that we and the public could have a better understanding of the impact that this triennial plan had, has had on the school district. And then going into the last year, we just think it, it's, it's not only great to see where we've gone, but we want to really understand the true impact that we've made, and if there's any adjustments that need to be made. That is all I have. I will just pause. Again, I tried to wrap up feedback as good as I could. Anything else? Good, okay.
Can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
I just, it was about bringing in the ELL director, that I found it very productive and helpful in all the years past. Bringing in some of the people on that level, whether it's the sped director, the curriculum coordinators, da-da-da-da, whatever it may be, even the athletic director, just to talk about what's specifically going on in their sphere and educating us, enlightening us, speaking, having them speak directly to the public. It's been a hard year to do that because there's so much else going on. And, and they're constantly rapidly changing, and things are very, very deep concern. But when you get back on track, I think it'd be great to bring some of those people to the public and have them directly explain to the school committee what's going on. I felt like I really enjoyed hearing from the curriculum coordinators, for example. That's an issue I'm very interested in. So hopefully in the future, you could bring more of those, those administrators to the, to the school committee meeting.
Absolutely. That's a great idea.
Thank you, Mark.
And Dr. Freely would love to come, so.
Okay, great. So we can put that on a future agenda to have her come. And I hope I captured everybody's feedback, like wrapped up in a, okay. So the, the last piece on that is, I guess, so as we continue to work towards the, towards the end of the school year, we, you know, hope that some of those items will move from off track to on.
Sure.
Or complete. So, thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Ford, for, I know a lot of the goals on here, you're part of those, to help in the teams, you know, the curriculum coordinators and all those folks are part of the goal to try to help get that done. So, anyway, thank you. Done. In person, guess what time it is? It's in-person learning mode time.
There we go.
I think it's both of you guys, correct? Dr. Marcus?
We will share, yeah, some information, and I'm happy to take some questions. So in our last meeting, we talked about sort of the work that needs to be done and where we're going to finish up and get ready for April 5th. So I'm just going to go through those bullets really quick, and then we'll have an opportunity to, to ask any questions. First bullet was to finalize the sections and groupings and let teachers and families know about that. That has wrapped up, and that folks are now, the teachers have, have all gotten their, their lists and groups and know where they're going. And the individual principals are sending out information to, to families now, either connecting individually or sending out group lists with information about any sections or grouping changes or things like that. The next was to make sure that the, the phase two in-person learning plans were finalized. So you all have had a chance to, to take a look at those. And they are as, as final drafts. And so we're hoping to be able to, to put those out at some point in the next few days, to make sure that everybody has.
So when will we get the final drafts? Because I thought at this meeting, we were going to walk through those. You were going to present those. That's what we had talked about two weeks ago. So.
Oh, I thought, so we had sent them.
Via email, but then, so I don't, because I don't know if folks have questions or any concerns and the public probably wants to have an idea of where that is.
Sure.
So if there's finals, they've been changed since the last time you sent it. Is there a way for us to see the final drafts?
Yeah, it hasn't changed since, since a couple of weeks ago, when we, when we shared it with you all. So I can, I'm happy to put together, or put them out as hard copies or send them out.
Have you guys had time to go through them? I just want to make sure we don't have any surprises.
Sure.
You know what I mean? Because if you haven't heard back from us.
Yeah.
It would stink if you heard back in a month. Liz?
I'll say I did go through it. I had time to go through it. And I don't have any questions. I did already get my questions addressed. But there might be some things that, minor things that might change due to ongoing conversations, but.
Ongoing conversations with who?
Unions and.
Oh, okay.
So it, it's kind of a, I didn't see any changes from the last time I saw it to when I saw it previously emailed to me, let's put it that way.
So it's the final plan, and you guys are having conversations with folks to share the final plan? Correct. Okay, I got you. Katie?
I don't know what I can say, so I'll just.
What he said.
No, but you've had time to go through the plans. You feel at least, I just want you guys to get feedback now, if that's okay, so that you feel comfortable and families can start to see the plans?
Yes.
All right, so the plans, but the, the class sizes, can we go, can we talk about that now?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's part of the plans.
That was all different.
Why don't we, what, do you want to? Why don't we go down about the plans first? And then the class sizes are part of the rollout, so we can talk about that after, because I think we all have some. So, are you good with the plans?
I'm proud of the plan, yeah.
Go ahead.
The last meeting we had, there was one larger part of the conversation, basically between elementary school and second, and, and the middle school and high school. Can we just briefly, if possible, go over, because there was a dual mode, there was a single mode. Where did we land finally?
To be determined.
Dual mode.
That's what I thought.
We landed at dual mode in that meeting.
In the last meeting, we talked about all of us.
We all said dual mode, and that's what it is.
It should be a dual mode.
Yeah. It wasn't to be determined. That's what we said. You weren't here.
For elementary and?
Yes.
For every, for, okay, good, okay. Just checking.
Yeah, that's what you guys brought back, right? Because we had the meeting, we talked publicly, four of us said dual mode.
We did.
Okay, cool, okay.
Don't stray from where.
Yeah, good. And is there any other, you're the wrong person, you. So are there any, other than that, there was the detail plan. He was asking about the one that was not the high-level phase-two plan, but the detail plan that talked about things that they were doing day-to-day. We've got links to those.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Okay, I'm good too. And then the only thing I'd want to bring back that comes out of the phase two is you did the surveys. So it'd be nice to know the percentage of how many students are coming in person for five days. So do you have that number?
It's, it, it hasn't changed. It's, and it's the same figure that I had last time, which was, hold on.
Close to seventy-five, seventy-four, something like that?
Seventy-six percent in person and twenty-four percent remote.
And previously, it was like seventy-four?
The, in phase one, it was about, yeah, seventy-three percent, seventy-two percent to twenty-eight, something like that. And then in way back when, it was about seventy, thirty. So it's, yeah, so it's slowly moved more and more toward folks being in person, more comfortable with that, so.
And then Joe, do you want to pick up on the other piece that's coming out of phase two? The spacing based on how many students are coming back?
So the only thing that really jumped out at me is there was a couple of classes. What, on, on a normal class, to get kids at three feet spacing, how many kids could fit in an elementary classroom? I know all the classes are different sizes in the different schools. But what would be the amount of desks at three foot spacing and at four foot spacing?
Three foot is, is, and again, you're right, it depends on the classrooms, because some of the buildings, rooms are a little bit smaller. But on average, somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-four.
Okay.
At three foot. And at four foot, I'd have to check with Joyce. My guess would be ten percent less than that, something to that effect, so between eighteen and twenty. So somewhere in that range.
All right.
But we're striving not to go to the full capacity in any classroom. If, to me, twenty-four is just not a number I'm at all comfortable with. Twenty-three is a number I'm not comfortable with.
Not in the elementary, no.
I was just looking at some of these numbers, and for any class, we don't, we've been fighting to get our classes under twenty kids on a normal, pre-COVID. And I noticed like one class had twenty-three, one had twenty-two, a couple had twenty-one. And I know everything's screwed up here and everything's restricted. But when I see a classroom with twenty-three kids, and then I see a VLA class with eight kids, to put eight kids in a class with, there's no contact between anybody. And then to have twenty-three kids in a classroom where they're all right next to each other. It, the thought of it just seems skewed and doesn't make very much sense to me. I understand we don't want to move children away from the teachers and all this stuff. I get all of that. But, and I've always been a person, get the kids back in school, get the kids back in school, but we got to do it safely. And it's kind of counterintuitive to me to have such a small VLA and such a large classroom when it should be the inverse. That being said, as long as you're telling us that there's going to be no kids closer than three feet, correct?
There will not be.
Okay. I still think it shouldn't be that way. There's just no reason for it. I, other than what I've already gone over. But if you're guaranteeing that they're not going to be within three feet, you're still within the guideline. So it's ultimately the decision that falls on you guys. But now you're looking at a lot more kids quarantining. If there is a single case in a classroom with twenty-three kids, when you can have twenty-three kids in a remote class.
Understood. And I think no matter what, we're going to be, the, the potential for quarantining more students in a three-foot model, a four-foot model, a five-foot model. Is, is going to increase, no matter what we do. There's actually, today, on the commissioner's call, they were looking at possible changes to that whole guidance and whether or not it's, it needs to stay at six feet, or could that be a three-foot, kind of a, a model of close contact? You know, the definition of close contact. So right now, we're still at six. And the six is still, no matter what we do, you know, anything under that six-foot mark is going to create, you know, a, a border for a positive case. So we're trying as best as we can, I think, to, to make sure that we are spreading kids out. And you'll see that in most of the classrooms, that it's, it is definitely, you know.
The majority of the classes, I did see that, I don't have a complaint with a lot of them. The one that obviously stands out is the twenty-three. And for some reason, that entire school, they all seem to be twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And it's, it just seems like a lot. And I'm not saying just the spacing. I'm saying that many kids in a classroom brings in the potential to bring in something. The more kids, the potential to bring in, not just the quarantine.
And I think that what you're referencing is the VLA classes are much smaller, and the in-person ones have become much bigger in that building in particular. I believe Mr. Ford has been working on that and looking at that and with potential of a classroom being made smaller in that particular building that we're talking about. And in that, I had actually asked, because I'm nosy, so I asked last week and spoke to Mr. Ford. So in that particular classroom, I think three of those students, could you, do you mind telling us?
So, so in that particular school, there is a separate program. And although we include the kids from that program in the class count, because they have the potential to be in the classroom, like the classroom you're specifically referring to, a more realistic number is twenty, as opposed to the twenty-three that you're seeing.
That's why I'm on my phone, yeah.
I'm just saying, the, the underlying philosophy between all this, so, so I, could I talk just a couple of things real quick?
But just onto that point, you, you said those three children won't be, but this is telling me that three are physically included.
So, so when I, I talked with the principal specifically about this classroom.
Okay.
And he said, if we have the potential to have a student in one of our sub-separate programs in the classroom, we absolutely put them in the class count. He said, in all likelihood, if we look at that particular class, that class number's going to be twenty.
Okay.
Although in our planning, you know, we have it up to twenty-three, and twenty-three being as far as he's going to go in that building.
Okay.
So that no matter what the scenario is, we can absolutely be within safe parameters. But, but what we're really looking at that school is a number lower than what you're seeing on the, the grid. Because in a lot of those cases, we're including kids that are, probably aren't going to be in the classroom. But we want to make sure that that's factored into our planning to ensure the fact that whatever the scenario is, we're still within the requirements of the physical distance.
Kind of, kind of.
Yeah, like the paperwork that was handed out to us doesn't have it. I don't know if everybody checked their email today. But it's just when you look at the VLA, some of the classes are ten, fourteen, fourteen, eight, twelve, ten, twelve, thirteen. And then you look at some of the classrooms at that one particular school.
It's twenty-three.
Adjust, adjust by two, three in each class. So you're looking at twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. And if my phone slides, I think the rest of them are twenty-three, twenty-two, and twenty-one, twenty, or something like that. So when you're looking at this few kids learning on computers and not in a room, but yeah, kind of put twenty-three kids in a room, it just kind of, I'll get off my cell phone, it's good.
Katie, I know, has feelings on this, so you might have to just go down this way. Go ahead.
No, I pretty much echo everything that Joe has said. But the other thing too, was, what brings up to my attention is, so the elementary especially, and when you bring in potentially the twenty-three, would you not be bringing in an aide as well? A paraprofessional, someone to help with that too? So I'm just seeing like this classroom.
Growing?
That has now has about, you know, twenty-three students and then two teachers. So I'm just making sure that we're all being safe.
So to talk about that particular scenario, I've actually discussed that with the principal. So this, when, in looking, before we even looked at the VLA, I called the principal, because I know John had been having ongoing conversations with all the principals. And I, and I looked at his particular school, and I said, all right, play out these scenarios for me. Because they feel comfortable with their numbers, and they don't, they don't want to break up their classes because the students already have relationships with the teachers. And it's, I think those relationships are more important this year than they have ever been. And so I posed a similar scenario to him, and he said, you know, we have, one of the things we did in anticipation of bringing kids back on the fit, is we reached out to a lot of our retired teachers and asked if they want to finish the year with us. So in this, for this particular class, you know, if that scenario played itself out, he said, I can absolutely then, because I'm going to know in advance what the class capacity is going to be, if these kids are going to be joining the class. He said, I can small, pull out a small group, and I can send them to work with one of my retired teachers to do a targeted lesson. He said, he said, usually for these classes, you know, the student will come in for morning meeting, do calendar, do other specific events. And then, you know, the other, they'll shift back to, they have their, you know, they have their own classroom. And he said, I can absolutely have a small group session. I can artificially deflate the numbers in the classroom and ensure the fact, even if we're adding an additional adult, paraprofessional and other teacher, whatever it might be, that we're well within our safety parameters. So it's, it's, there were a lot of discussions leading up to this decision. And there were a lot of questions that principal had to answer. If we were in fact not going to, you know, ship some people around and artificially deflate his class at our level, you know, with, with us stepping in and saying, you know, we're going to do this. And if you don't want us to do this, or you don't want this resource, you need to explain to me why. You need to ensure that you in fact have thought these things out, and you have the capacity to make adjustments on the fly, or systemically, to ensure the fact that you never go over that number. And I have a great deal of confidence in that principal. And he had, he had an answer for every question I threw at him, every scenario that I made him work out with me.
So, so I'll just, I know that you want to jump in, so I'm just going to go super quick and just say that at the last meeting, we talked about VLA and that you guys were going to be shifting a lot of those teachers back into the buildings. That didn't happen. And I think that the shock from the size of the classrooms in that building is where this is coming from. And then seeing that the number of VLA teachers that weren't shifted, that you had stated you were going to, that's where it got a little tricky for folks.
Concerning.
Yeah, it was concerning, because while in November, when we voted for the in-person learning mode change, shift, what folks didn't see was the plan that we were seeing that was on the wall, because it hadn't been on the screen. And it was all these things and all these shifts and all this. We actually moved that timeline back. I don't think people had realized it at the time. So we shifted it back by two weeks to roll it out. But what was important is that, at least for us, the safety of how many people are in a building, in the classroom. And knowing that we had temporary resources up until, contractually, up until April vacation, that we were told would be shifting back into the classrooms and making the in-person classes smaller. So I, I guess what I'd ask is, I trust the principals and their judgment, and it's their buildings. They know what they're doing, and they, you know, you obviously spoke to this particular one, and they shared the information. What I ask is that if we get into a situation and other students that had a teacher, and they want to come in or whatever, that number one, we, you know, put them in the right spot, but we're not growing these classrooms bigger than what they are, that we actually open up another classroom? Because at this particular elementary, it's two per grade, and we can do three. So I just ask that that is something that remains on the table, if that principal feels it's getting a bit bigger and expanding.
And we have, I want to say, we do have the capacity to make further adjustments. If we need to, we will.
Okay.
And one of the things that was part of our conversations was looking at, like the last few years, and seeing what your enrollment changes are towards the end of the year, to ensure the fact that you have the capacity to absorb a student or two, or whatever, whatever you've seen over the last few years. But, but, you know, if we have to make further adjustments, we will.
Yeah, I think that that's just something worth stating. And then the last thing is looking at the high school and the middle school. I think the reason why we were harping on the elementary level is because they're older buildings. They don't have the ventilation and all that stuff going on. The middle school I was concerned about because of the same scenario. And then looking at the numbers, it's great to see the sizes. I did call Mr. Colantonio to talk about, just, I just get worried for the people in that building. So it was nice to see that when he created the sections at the start of the year, he created them at a certain number, so that if it shifted to in-person learning mode, none of those kids were impacted. So if those kids were half and half, hybrid, then went to in-person, whatever, it ends up that they still have that same teacher, and it's not going to impact, and they can still be three feet, four feet apart. So that was really nice to hear at the middle school level. And that none of the classes were, there was one that's at twenty-two. So anyway, so that was a nice thing to say. Anita, pass it to you.
My question is definitely related, but it, it might be a stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. All of these, the classroom sizes, it has, the first thing that pops into my head is, do we have enough teachers to do all the classes that we are currently offering to all of our students? And I'm talking from elementary through high school, number one. Because if we don't, we need to get them substitutes, or if we have enough substitutes available. VLA is one thing, but, and what about the ones that were out, they opted out? I know there wasn't a lot of the teachers that opted out for the year. But when do we get in touch with them? Are they coming back for next year? All that good sort of stuff.
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a great question. The, 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 the teachers that were, some of the teachers that moved into VLA, we'll continue on with that. Some have moved back in person. The secondary teachers are facilitators. The secondary teachers are facilitators, and they're continuing on as facilitators at the secondary level, and all are coming back in person. There's, and nothing goes beyond this year.
So, there's no, there's no correlation between a teacher in the classroom and the class size, or if we're missing a teacher from the classroom?
No, yeah. No, that's, and I'm glad you asked. I mean, I think it's, you would think that, and we were looking at, you know, that, I mean, that was one of the concerns about secondary, is not so much at the middle school, because as, as Mrs. Groppi said, they, they had planned that out at twenty-two already. It's harder to do that at the high school, because there are only like one or two AP courses or things like that. And so, you'll see that, that some of those are a little bit higher, but nothing that goes beyond the capacity.
I just, I just really don't wanna hear any stories about, like, massive study halls, because we don't have a teacher in a class. I, anyway.
Yeah, because we don't wanna put anybody in a, teachers or students in a bad position with this.
Well, and lost, lost learning content.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's not good.
Could I just add something to that?
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that my office does is we do control the flow of student-teachers in and out of the district, have people on practicums, whatever, whatever they might need for their college experience. And I did send a list to all the principals of all the student-teachers in their buildings, and what date they complete their programs, so that if, in fact, you have a teacher going on maternity leave or something towards the end of the school year.
Nice.
You know, I talked to the, the directors at the various colleges to waive the requirement, allow them to come in and finish the year as a teacher.
That's great.
So, we have that capacity now to pull these student-teachers in the classroom if we need them at the end of the year. And also, that if, if you don't have a position, hire them as a building sub.
Right.
So that we have more capacity in all of our schools.
Right.
And I know four or five have already signed up, and I expect to see more over the next few, next few days, or next week or so, so that we do have that expanded capacity in all of our schools as we bring all these kids back. Great.
And we continue to advertise for subs, so, but it's, as you say, I think the, the critical piece is to have the teachers themselves in front of the kids.
In the classroom, yep.
So, and that was hard when we were, you know, dealing in January with some of the, the spikes in the, in the, in the cases. Hopefully, we don't see that as much. I mean, right now, the, you know, we're dealing with vaccinations and, and the impact on that, but we're hoping to see, you know, as the weather gets better and people are feeling good, that they're, you know.
And pool testing.
And pool testing is, yes.
Going, going good, okay.
Which was one of the things we put in place, knowing that we were going into full in-person mode. It was always a part of the plan early on for our leadership team here, was to start rolling that out once we got to this point. There's just one last thing, and then I'm gonna give it to Molly.
Almost leaving us.
Oh, you're also, OMS, I just wanna note that, I think there was some misconceptions with that building in particular, and I wanted to just highlight it. I was, reached out to yesterday by a parent, asking if students were having class in the cafeteria. And that would be, something about seating with being first come, first served, and then students, I, I didn't really understand it, but I did, that's why I called Mr. Colantonio. And he reassured me, that's not the case. There's assigned seating, we have to have assigned seating for close contact tracing, so I wanna note that publicly. Then, in addition to that, there are desks in the cafeteria, so it does look like a massive classroom, but it's because six feet apart for lunch, you sit in the caf, you sit at a desk, it's separate. And also, for chorus and music, because those tend to be larger classrooms, they do go in the caf, so that they're spread further apart and able to do what they need to in a safe environment. So, there are no classes that are given, or any students, if there's overflow, just wanna make sure that's clear. The seats, it's very clear how many students will be in each classroom, I'm looking at that, and the numbers are, it's twenty-two for, like I said, I see one, like, it's very small num, like, yeah.
There's two, right?
Yeah, yeah. I got to like that, and I said, okay, these are really low numbers. So, my point is, I just wanna make sure that there's no misconception, that it's not a first come, first serve, in that there is assigned seating, and it's absolutely required for close contact tracing. You need to know where a student was at all times, and where they sat in each classroom. And there are students that won't just go to the, they won't remote into the classroom from the caf.
Right.
Okay.
It sounds like that's something that was happening in other districts.
Really?
That, that, where there is, for whatever reason, they weren't planning ahead, or something happened, and more kids came in, and so there was an overflow.
Overflow, okay.
Kind of a place where, where kids would go. We've, we've not needed to do that.
Really?
We're not going to do that.
Interesting. I think that, while I know it might have been frustrating for folks, and I can totally understand that, in November, that was not the case for, from our perspective, from your perspective, but we were really trying to plan ahead. The one thing that we like to do is, we like to make sure that we, we think worst-case scenario, in that if there's anything that we've learned through this pandemic, is nothing's guaranteed. So, we wanted to try to have a plan that if we were, we were told, you have to start going back full five days in person on April 5th. I knew it would come out of nowhere, it's been happening with us all the time, so we were prepared, and we were able to. Whereas you're hearing now about other districts that are doing first come, first serve in some seats, or doing things from the caf, remoting into a classroom, we didn't want that to happen. So, that was why we started in November, all this work.
And I think, and there are other districts that have actually gone, because they have to, below three feet.
Oh, my gosh.
So, it's, it's, you know, it, it all depends on the situations that folks are in, and the spacing, and the, you know, the.
Space, yeah, gosh.
The requirements, demands of, you know, the state and all that. But, I think we're in, I think we're in good shape. I think folks are gearing up and getting ready for April 5th. It's definitely gonna be a shift. We talked about some of the things, I, today had two phone calls about traffic, so I think people are definitely, it's a tangible thing that they're concerned about, but it's, I guess, worth noting. So, we're working on that. We checked in with Mrs. Husany and, and Ms. Kerman today about the buses, and there are minimal changes, if any, so that's really good. All the students who wanted a bus are on a bus.
Oh, nice.
Which is, which is better than it has been in the past. That doesn't mean that there aren't gonna be questions or confusion, and, whoops.
Yes, a bug.
Oh.
Spring.
The timing.
So, there may be some adjustments or changes that first week. They're anticipating that, but right now, they're in good shape. The classrooms have been set up for the most part, and they'll be done by this weekend, and then the outdoor spaces, the tents, will all be going up next week.
Nice.
So, that's neat.
So, is there, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay. You were talking about the traffic. Now, will there be people out there guiding people?
Yeah.
Because I know that the OMS used to have, like, no left turn, and that's out the window.
Yeah, so.
So, I didn't know if, what was gonna happen with all that.
I talked to.
Can't wait to find out.
I talked to Mr. C. today, and he said, I'm gonna send a, a document that explains everything, and, like, okay. And then we talked through, sort of, you know, getting back to what, what folks are a little more used to at OMS, in terms of the no-left turn, and the, the, the single lines and things like that, so.
They can pull all the way up?
Exactly, right. And that's the biggie. He said, people have, have gotten used to not having to pull down, because there's, there's just not that many cars, so it's, he said, actually, next week, they'll be outside and trying to spend the week getting folks more used to going back to the old ways. So, it'll definitely take longer. I mean, you know, we're doubling the number of vehicles in every building, so it, you know, it will.
So, I think they had a video last year, first they did, you could do left, then they took it and off. So, is there a way that all the principals can send out the traffic patterns at the buildings, including the high school, because it's gonna be a lot of students, they only have the beginning of the year, the first year at the high school? So, maybe if there's a traffic pattern thing that goes, I wouldn't know, my husband drops off, I'd get, I'd go the wrong way.
I'm gonna bring my coffee and just sit there and watch it all happen.
You show.
She's gonna be like this, watching.
I have a quick question, hopefully, not really related to busing or traffic, but seventy-five, seventy-six percent of students are in class, and the other proportion are at home. Have we considered opting in, opting out, as we did back in the beginning of where parents could choose, oh, I want them to go in person now, or, oh, I wanna take them back remote? I guess one is easier than the other, but.
Yeah, and the statement, the statements that we've been making are, that we're trying to do less of that in this, this last piece of the year. And, but, but, again, if folks are feeling, and we're feeling, and it's part of this whole push that we've, we've had over the last several months, is to have more in-person learning.
Right.
And if people feel like that's, that's gonna be more effective for their students, then we're gonna try as best we can to find a way to do that. It might take a little bit more time than, than we have been able to do in the past, but, but that's obviously an important, you know, an important thing.
Okay.
We fully support the school committee offering a remote option till the end of the school year. And it's important for people to know that. That's not something that, if the commissioner of education doesn't come in and say, make another change, we hundred percent support it. So, that's something that, I think people should understand that. We would never want to take that off the table. While I can respect that some people are remote, and might, might be recommended for them to come in, because it might help them better, there's always gonna be that, that option for the people that are virtual learning academy. And I know that those teachers need to be extended the contract, and then, you know, just any secondary, if you're remote, you're remote.
Yeah.
We wanna respect that.
Yeah.
Molly, did you have anything?
Almost set, thanks.
She's gonna fall asleep.
Good discussion. No, 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 good discussion. It's, it's, actually, it's exciting.
Yeah.
Think that we're gonna bring more kids back.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful.
I am, too. I am, too. And then we'll have guidelines. I'm just working nervous about it, though. So, we'll have, so, while they're gonna be like three feet, I think I said this to you last week, if they're three feet, that makes the close contact tracing, it's, some folks are closer. So, are we going to offer to any family that didn't opt in to contact tracing, the test, the rapid test, if they're considered a close contact, are we gonna be able to say, hey, listen, now that you guys are three feet, and you're, it's not one kid anymore, it's, I don't know, four or six? Is that something that we can consider with giving them the rapid tests that we, we do, and then if they're not positive? Like, how does that?
The magic number is actually four-point-three feet, although I don't know how that's gonna play out in reality, to go from, from four to potentially eight if you're in the middle of the room.
Yeah.
But I did talk to Nurse Gallin.
Yeah.
And she says, because we do have the binox in district, we can utilize that.
Awesome.
For our parents and kids.
That's awesome.
And that'll speed up getting kids back in.
Well, I just wanna, not only that, but I just wanna make sure, safety-wise, like, because they're all so close. Again, we wanted kids in person, but we want it safely, so I wanna make sure that we have whatever we can.
And then the other, the other piece that you asked was about the, the pool testing, and, and that's open, every, every week, folks can opt in if they haven't done it before. And we continue to, I mean, it's slowly increasing, and I put it out in our, in my little Monday messages, and each week, you know, we add another thirty or forty people. So, we'll see as we move ahead, but folks can absolutely opt into that at any time.
Okay. Okay. So, and then we're gonna keep tight, like, if kids are supposed to be, because I'm just wary, six feet was like, you knew someone was six feet, or if you took a mask break, it was six feet. So, mask breaks now will be, they'll walk out of the classrooms, they'll go somewhere else, and then if they're in a classroom, you know, it's hard for, like, elementary level per se, I don't know, older kids, too, who are we kidding, making sure that they're staying in their space. Is that, like, are we, like, is there some type of protocol or something that we're putting in place to make sure that just, I know in the past, when we had some close contacts, and the numbers could have been a little higher, it was because we weren't sure, I guess, was the words, if that person was less than six feet.
Right.
This one makes me wary. How many we're-not-sure are we gonna get? What can we do to ensure that we don't have the we're-not-shures and scare the community, or the parents, or the kids?
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, the contact tracing piece goes into, you know, when they, when the nurses do that, they go into great detail with, you know, either the students, if they're older, or with the teachers, to make sure that they're, you know, making clear exactly who's sitting where.
But we're gonna make sure, like, that's where it's sitting there, and it's not.
Yeah, so the seating charts are gonna be really important, pre-K to twelve, you know, we really need to know where everybody is, and where they're sitting. And the, and the nurses will continue to do that, you know, in-depth investigation, to make sure that everybody is, is contacted if they, you know, if they're a close contact.
Hey, and if I could add one more thing for parents?
Yeah, please do.
I mean, what, what I would wanna know is, how does this actually affect, like, the transmission rate in the school, moving from six feet to potentially three feet?
Right.
And the Department of Ed just released a study that was done, you know, through Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center, Harvard University, I mean, it's just a cornucopia of, of different high-end medical establishments. And they looked at, I think it's around a half a million kids and a hundred thousand educators, and they were trying to determine the impact of going from six feet to three feet on the transmission rate. And what they found is, there really isn't a difference, provided that everybody's wearing a mask, and that you have fresh air flowing in the classroom.
Okay.
So, so, for parents, you know, this isn't gonna increase the transmission rate in the school, provided kids keep their masks on.
Their masks.
And that we keep air flowing in the classrooms, either through the HVA system at the high school, or, you know, teachers cracking windows, and we have air purifiers, and air is moving. So, so, according to the research, because we're not public health officials, I mean, we, we depend on the Department of Ed and Department of Public Health to supply us with up-to-date information. And based on the experience that we've had in the Commonwealth over the last, you know, most six, six, seven months, being in this environment, this isn't gonna put kids more at risk, this particular move.
Thank you, that makes me feel better.
I did have one more question. And we got to lunches. Right now, the elementary kids are sitting in their classrooms, eating their lunches, as is all the kids.
Yeah.
When they have lunches, mask breaks are easy, they go outside and do their mask breaks, lunches, if all kid, no kid will be near anybody else within six feet while they're eating their lunch, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Has there been discussion at all about that changing, or no? Like, have you heard anything about the six-foot lunch?
If they take their mask.
No, I know, but I don't.
No, actually, that's a really good question, because you would think, because that's been the thing that has held up all kinds of decisions.
Like, busing changed, like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and it's, so, the fact that busing changed and lunch didn't change is just one of those, you know, million things where you shake your head. But, no, the, and in, in the call today, the commissioner was very clear, like, they don't, we don't expect the six-foot rule to change for, for lunch and breakfast, so.
That's good. I mean, that's good to know, that they don't, every change seems to be out of the blue sometimes for us, with the commissioner, so.
Well, well, the lunch piece, you know, we're not anticipating that changing. It was interesting that the commissioner did let us know that they were petitioning to try to have the close contact piece in schools potentially change from six feet to three feet, based on the research that they've been providing us.
Oh, well, that's fascinating, that's good news.
So, that would be, that would be incredible, actually.
Yeah, that's game changer.
As far as we know, these parameters are set through the end of school, or they're gonna change in two weeks again?
The parameters that the DPH and CDC and.
Yeah. There's no time limit?
I mean, the fact that, that in my update today, I hit you with, I don't know, four or five different things, I don't, I mean, we never know, you know, it's, it's sort of a.
Obviously, it depends on the.
Yeah, an ever-changing kind of a thing. And I do think that, you know, we've, you really have to sort of think about these changes as if it was three or four weeks ago, and you're holding the crystal ball and looking forward and saying, okay, the rates are coming way down, and whatever. But, there's always that lag, you know, where something could change, and then.
Well, and I just wanna just repeat to everybody at home, the, the kids, the parents, everybody to just, it's not over yet.
Right.
We have to be, still be vigilant until everybody and their brother and their sister gets vaccinated, number one. Number two, it's just, even afterwards, it, do what the, the facts tell you, the science tells you, I mean, keep your mask, keep your guard up. Everybody, hopefully, will all be, get through it.
Sure.
I guess we went through the whole phase-two plan mentally. It was important that we did, I think.[1683.63]
I'm glad that we went through.
Because we hadn't really seen, like, talked through it or had it fully presented, so we had a lot of questions.
No, absolutely.
Thank you.
And this is gonna be communicated.
Yeah, one of the parents, no.
So we will, as long as you all are okay with those final plans. As Joe and Katie said, that it's, there's slight things that may shift. But I think that we can, that we can pretty much put out the plans in detail to folks.
Okay.
So.
All right, so if there's nothing more to discuss on that, wonderful. Moving on to the FY '21 budget update and articles that we'll be presenting at town meeting.
So, thank you. FY '22, we're still moving forward with our voted budget. And we've been in various meetings with FinCom and subcommittees and things like that. And I'm continuing to sort of keep an eye on those as they move forward over the last few weeks and into the future. There's been a fluctuating gap in the overall budget. That's right now around $540,000. It's gone from as low as about 100 up to, I think this is about the high. I talked to the Chair of the Finance Committee today about, you know, where we're at with the budget and where we're, and how we're moving forward. As you know, we released our security article, the funds from that, $177,000. I talked about that and how that's gonna be used moving forward. And he talked about how that's not necessarily something that the FinCom is looking to reduce that 540 gap, but to actually use to fund some of the smaller capital projects with.
It's cash.
It's cash, because of cash, so just wanted to share that.
So we could still use it then, because we didn't purchase everything we wanted, because we didn't hand it back yet, right? It was something that we offered to fill the gap, is that what you're saying?
No, he's talking right now, the budget, the remaining funds, remaining funds.
No, the money, we gave back an article and said.
We gave back 177, that's done, but.
It's not done, from what I'm hearing.
No, they have it, town has it, but FinCom is not, is choosing not to use it towards the budget, they're holding it for cash items, for cash articles.
But did we give it back, or did we offer to give it back, Dr. Marcus? What was the, like, did we say to fill the gap, there was 300,000, we had offered to give that to help fill the gap?
I think we offered to, I think that's what we presented it as. FinCom, I think, is looking at it to, to use it for, instead of using it, it's still gonna essentially fill a need, which is to cover the, because it's cash, to be able to cover other smaller projects that would, instead of borrowing for them, that they were able to.
Is it other projects that would be coming up in town meeting? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm confused about. So that article that we, so it won't per se fill a gap.
Exactly.
But it will.
Offset spending other or borrowing.
So the gap would have been $177,000 more, but because they're offsetting other article spending, it went down to 500. Anita, can you explain it to me? Like, I don't get it, I'm confused.
The gap in the town budget, the last number that I heard, it's out of balance by 524,000.
Okay.
The $177,000 cash-funded article that we had, we returned to them because we had other funding that we had purchased our radios and whatnot with. Being that it was a cash-based article, the FinCom decided not to use it to balance the budget against the 524, but to keep it for articles, because there are some articles that have to be paid by cash.
Okay.
So that's where the 177 will help. So, long story short, the last I knew, a couple of days ago, last FinCom meeting, we're still at a 524 deficit. But there's still, the governor's budget, there's still more budgets coming out, it's not even April.
So, when you, correct me if I'm wrong, Anita, but when you, a lot of these articles, if we're bonding them out or if we're taking loans on it, instead of saying it's a $300,000 purchase of that year, they'll take a five, just for.
Correct.
So it'll take a five-year bond on it, so it's only costing them 50,000 per year.
They can bundle it.
Not the 300,000, so they're using, that's why you're not seeing that whole 177,000 disappear at once.
Correct.
Because when you bond something else, it's just.
But there are a couple of articles that have to pay, you have to pay cash on, Bill Rowe said, I forget what they were, but there's two smaller ones that they have to buy, use cash. Oh, the pond, cleaning the pond or something, for whatever reason, they have to pay that by cash. I think that was 60,000 or something.
Okay, thank you.
So to that end, what, what.
I'm so confused, sorry.
And I'm glad, Anita, you were able to explain that, thank you. And so they're looking at other ways to fill that 524.
Right, right.
In.
They're not done yet, they still have a couple of weeks.
There's still ways to go, the governor's budget, the initial budget came out, but then there's gonna be another, the House Two, so that'll come out later. There's now the American Recovery.
Yep.
Whatever that's called, ARPA Plan, money that's about two and a half million.
I heard two and a half million to the town.
That the town is gonna be getting, that's different than the money that's coming to the schools. But so there's, so there's other ways to fill that gap that the Chair was talking about.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I feel better, thanks. It's like, what?
Well, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of like COVID money that cares money, whatever that has specific uses that you can do it for. But if you start getting used to swapping it out and covering.
I was just, no, I was more confused about when we said we'll hand this back, so we'll come back in a couple of years if we need more, you know, to purchase more to fill the remainder of the need. I was like, oh, if they're not gonna use it, then we can just purchase the remainder of the need.
But once we hand it back, we're done.
No, right, but I'm just saying, I didn't think we handed it, I think we offered to fill the gap with that, and that's, but then you just explained.
They're using a different.
They're gonna use it to fund something else, so that, I'm not gonna go further because it's gonna get confusing, but I totally followed it and I understand now. No, it makes sense, thank you for explaining it, guys.
So that's the budget piece, and then the article piece, we, as you know, we have the article for the feasibility study at South. And we're continuing on with that, we're excited that we're as close as we are, keeping our fingers crossed. We, the next board meeting of the MSBA is April 14th or 16th. And so we're hoping to hear either at that meeting, oftentimes the MSBA will let you know that something is coming up, so we'll see. So hopefully we'll hear in mid-April about that. And then the other article was the SPED stabilization fund. And I guess there were some questions that were asked recently about that. And we had sent some information to the Finance Committee to explain a little bit more about what that's all about. I think it's pretty straightforward, I'm not sure what the questions were necessarily. But again, it's, the idea for us is that we're just establishing the.
The fund.
The fund, the space for it this year. It covers extraordinary special education costs and that the max that you can put into that fund is 2% of your net school spending, so.
That's the max that the balance can be, correct?
The balance of the fund, thank you, that's right. So, in the, in the article itself is the law that actually explains the, you know, each of the pieces of how the, how the fund is laid out and all that. So I think it's, you know, it's pretty clear what, what that's for and why. And we're looking forward to being able to move forward on that, so.
So the questions didn't come from school committee though?
No.
It came from the, do you mind just talking about the email that we received? About questions coming out, we got an email that I saw. And it was by the town manager asking, saying that the school committee was upset about Finance Committee wanting to ask questions, but we just had a meeting with them on Thursday?
Okay, I know, Dr. Marcus, you would.
We had had a conversation about, about the questions. And I called to ask, you know, just if there were specific questions that she may have had about the article itself or.
Who's she?
Sorry, Dr. Grimm.
Okay.
And, and so we had, you know, we had that conversation. And I think there were concerns or questions about, you know, folks wondering about it and being concerned about it. But not schools committees per se, I think I called myself to ask.
Because you were concerned, I know that we had talked, we had received.
I'm confused because it was a big chain of back and forth, so I wasn't sure on who was asking the questions because we just had that meeting with Finance Committee, so I didn't think any further questions would have came up.
Okay.
Maybe I missed something.
I tried to wrap this up, I'm writing notes because now I'm understanding what you guys are asking, I wasn't prepared to talk about this.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Okay, so, Dr. Marcus, we received like an email, you made a phone call, follow up to Dr. Grimm just to check in and see what was needed.
Right.
I had a jump and I was working, so I had a jump. And then I think the concern came from a previous FinCom meeting about three weeks ago, before that, which is now four, where there was a statement made that there was a hope that the SPED article didn't go through because the turnbacks would be, you know, it'd be in jeopardy of turnbacks. You know the statement better, you, I think you memorized it.
Yeah, and I think, and I think the concern was that, you know, if, if the school committee or us as a, as the public schools has the ability to, to put money into the stabilization fund, what is that, how does that impact, you know, overall turnbacks, if there are any, from one year to the next? And so I think that the key piece there is that you have to be reasonable about it. And we have to, you know, have those kinds of conversations and we will, you know, it's really up to the committee to make those kinds of decisions.
No, but the FinCom, the FinCom meeting, the statement was made, not that, that wasn't the discussion. It was, there was that I have concerns with this article passing. It's a special education stabilization fund for children with special education needs. So I think that we had heard about that, you had known about that, and you obviously bring everything to our attention because that's a governing board. But then when this, when you had received that and then we chatted super quick, like, you know, it was something you brought forward as your concern. I then reached out to a member of the Select Board just to connect and say, hey, you know, because that's what we try to do in our relationship that we've built is talk if there's something that you would like to bring forward or et cetera. And that's what, you know, it was just a, hey, just checking in, this is what's going on. You know, do we know what the questions are, who's asking the questions, why is this concerning? You know, why did, you know, Dr. Grimm go out to legal counsel, her legal counsel, we already did all that, it's our article. It was that type of stuff, so I had asked because that was the stuff that we had discussed. And obviously, I want to try to advocate as much as I can for whatever you would like me to find out. So that was it, and then we got an email the next morning where she was not very happy that, I think, that I called a Select Board member to ask valid questions regarding the, our article. And it headed, you know, a couple of times, well, there was an apology soon thereafter, it stated, but I don't know why you guys are upset. So my response was clear that I didn't want any part of that or any drama or anything like that. But really, it just, the piece from where I came from, from a school committee perspective, was, and the school committee members that reached out to you, not so much to me, was that they were just concerned with why are these comments being made? We really want support for the special education children and students, not to try to have anybody not want to support this article. Anyway, so that was it, and then I felt that the response that I received just kept going. And it just wasn't something that I was hoping to get involved with on a Friday. So, so that's kind of where it stands and that's where it is. And what I would prefer for anybody in the public is, I'm happy to have a face-to-face conversation, but I do not care to have, I think things can get misconstrued when you write them. And I, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, subscribe to back and forth. I have a rule, three emails, it's done, so that's for anybody else who wants to email me, that's gonna be my rule. Yeah, that's why I call, I don't do more than, it's, if we're gonna go back and forth that many times, it's unnecessary, let's just talk. Because it does get misconstrued, anyway, point being.
I feel like we're a conservative board and I feel like we try to make our budgets not, we're very cautious of how, what we do. So, I mean, I think that at the end of the year, if we had money to put into a stabilization fund for special education, I do not believe that we would ever put the whole amount in there because we, as a committee, believe that this is one student and we're trying to make sure that we can all have fair game at everything. So, I mean, just that statement's kind of absurd to me, but move it on and move it forward.
I don't understand what's the difference between a stabilization fund for one thing or the other, there is no difference. You put money into a building stabilization fund, a fire apparatus fund and everything else.
It's the control issue, it's who has control to put money into it. That's where the crux of it.
It's a fund for when you need the money, because a $300,000 tuition for a child that moves into Stoughton.
One child, yep.
Well, one single child can cripple our budget.
Yep. And this year, we had to hire a one-on-one nurse, so, I mean, things happen every year, so it's, it's not that we just made this up. This is something that's real and it needs to be addressed, so.
Districts are using it, it's fairly new, it's a couple of years old, I like to say it's old, I think we're late for the game, we should have opened it. It's a control issue, too bad, is what I say. We were elected by the public to support the children of the Stoughton Public Schools, to advocate for them and to look out for what is right for them and what is best for them, and that's what we're doing with this. Control isn't something that we're really caring about, we're just trying to make sure that the kids are getting the best that they can, the best education and support that they can. And providing whatever we can within the buildings so that the teachers can give them that education. So whether we put $5 in, 50,000 in, whatever it is, I don't think any sound person would take a whole turnback and put it into any account. That just seems absurd, and that's where I take offense. But anyway, let's move on from that. Hopefully, I will hear from the FinCom Secretary, Vone, where he'll provide those questions if there's any additional questions from them, because we do want to answer them.
Yeah.
We answered a lot, but there weren't any, so I hope that he can just send them, but I don't know, I. I don't know, but anyway, let's continue, if there's anything, Dr. Marcus, you're concerned with or any questions you want to bring to our attention, we're always happy to advocate for the kids and bring it forward to the appropriate people. Okay, yep, so that's the article, so that's great, and then the high school building project update, Katie?
So we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we did bring up, well, it was brought up, the closing out or capping. And we decided to, we were gonna pull off and revisit it in the fall, I believe. I do know that, I believe the majority of the building committee thought that it was important to keep it open for, you know, a full each season before we ended up closing it out, so just to let everyone know. But the sign's still not fixed. And there's an H.
Oh, yeah, the H.
Oh, the H is gone.
The H is gone, but it's silent anyway, so it really doesn't matter. No, but it should be coming up.
It had blown off in the wind, I guess, right, Ms. Miller said.
That's what Ms. Miller's claiming, but we have to go look at the cameras to make sure it wasn't her.
Stugging.
I didn't realize which H it was, I thought it was on the backside.
It's a big one.
It's a big H.
I think I know it was on the field.
That's funny. There's the other thing, which I'm glad that came up because Dr. Marcus and I are going to the SMAC board meeting on the 7th of April and we're bringing Ryan.
Dr. McGee can come in.
Dr. McGee, yes, he's coming with us because the correspondence I shared with you guys at the last meeting was that the wire, there was wiring issues at the high school and they were trying to figure all that out. And thank goodness, that's great news because we don't know what the issues are and if graduation's gonna happen out in the field. There's a lot of things that need to be tested and looked at. So we're looking forward to going to the, that, that board meeting and trying to figure out what are they looking for and making sure that they can, you know, help in any way, from sound, video, and that we get a plan together. So you might be hearing more about stuff that needs to get done.
And I believe that I have, we have another meeting in April, April something.
They do.
So we're not, we're not dissolved yet.
No.
Awesome. We have other matters, we'll go through a couple of things, then I'll pass it over to Molly for other matters. Okay, promised myself I wasn't gonna do this. All right, so, okay, so for correspondence, did anybody get any correspondence?
Just that great, long email that.
Yes.
We talked about already.
And the motion to remove an article.
Oh, the email.
Yes, okay, yeah, so I can bring it up? So we received an email earlier today that there was a petition, that petition that we've talked about several times in this meeting in regards to Line Lumber Road. There was a hearing.
Petitioned article.
Public hearing last night that was petitioned by Bobo Regan as a public, a citizens petition. And I attended, Dr. Marcus attended, and Molly Cochran attended, just to listen in and see if there are any questions or anything that were needed. He gave a very lengthy and detailed description of the petition and basically the whole shebang about it. And then at the end, withdrew the petition. However, there were, we didn't have the option to speak, or there was no public comments. There were a couple of things that I'd like to dispel where I had a timeline, and I don't know if you had planned on bringing that up on the screen. But we don't have to, that's fine, whatever, but I think it's powerful to see, if it's ready, I would love for people to see it.
So can I just, can, so last night, you attended a meeting that.
A hearing.
A hearing.
Hearing, public hearing.
So he withdrew it, but spoke about, I'm thinking he spoke about.
He was the petitioner, it was his article, it was going, so it was a public hearing for that article.
But if you were gonna withdraw it, why would you speak on it?
Because that's his, it's his choice, it's his choice to do that.
What's that, Molly?
So we're trying to figure that one out.
I mean, he was presenting it, it's his article, it's presenting it as if normal, like everybody else presents their article. But then when he got done presenting, he withdrew it.
Yeah, that's like.
I know.
Drinking an ice cream cone and then walking up to you but handing it to the person behind you. But anyway, so if we can just go to the screen, that would be great on the camera. So I just think the long of the short was that there were a couple of comments that were made that were disingenuous and I just want to note that where, and I don't know, Anita, your thoughts on this discussion around the petition? Do you wanna stay out, would you?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'll sit here, but I'm not gonna comment.
She is recused, Anita has recused herself earlier on from any of these types of discussions, so, thank you, Anita, I just want to make sure you're comfortable. So I think the comment that the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Building Committee had requested to meet and then to present is disingenuous because when we received that email at the height of the planning for back to school, we ended up meeting in August 26th. It was not right away, but we did meet in August 26th with both of them, Dr. Marcus and I, in this very room. And we talked about what the next step was, was very clear that in that. It was very clear that in that meeting in October, that the School Committee would be discussing it, because we did have a almost two-hour presentation from the high, from not the high school, but the Public Safety Facilities Building Committee on February 11th. They came to our meeting, and it was a lengthy item. Also, when we were in that meeting in August, it was stated by the Chair of that Building Committee that they had already done that, and, you know, I was very clear that we were going to be having an open discussion, because I think people wanted to hear from the School Committee for a change. We had a lot of meetings, ultimately, to discuss Line Lumber Road, in particular, eight meetings, and starting in January 2020, and ending in October of 2020. Also, there was a statement made that School Committee declined to meet with the Select Board multiple times. I am looking up at the screen, and I am looking at the attendees for all of the meetings, and there were Select Board members present at almost all, if not most. So, I'm just looking. Also, there were some folks that may have been invited but weren't able to attend for personal reasons, myself included, but we had very lengthy discussion, and even after the vote on October 13th, there was not a decline to meet, but in turn, we met with the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Select Board on October 26th, including yourself, Dr. Marcus, and Dr. Grimm, and talked about the vote, and talked about where the stance was, and that we were moving on from there. So, I guess, as the letter stated many times, that we, to say that we were not, what was the word? Not complying, but.
Cooperating.
Cooperating. I would say that, it's a, it's an interesting choice of words, but I would say that we were trying our hardest to try to hear all the facts and everything else, because that's what it's about, and that's what you try to do. But to insinuate that we were being defiant, or not cooperating, or willing to talk or listen to anyone is just insulting, considering how much time that we put into this timeframe, these meetings, and talked about something that we didn't, we weren't bringing forward to town meeting. So, I just felt it's important to highlight that and note that those comments just weren't, they made no sense to me. And I think, Molly, I'll echo what you said. After I told you we had the meeting on October 26th, 2020, how many more meetings were we going to have? I'll echo what you said, and it was, how many more meetings, Sandra, are you going to have? I think you've done more than enough. So, I just wanted to kind of note that, because while we didn't have a chance to respond, I just think it's unfortunate to make negative comments about us when we tried all we could. But ultimately, we just didn't see that working, because our facilities, Master Plan Committee, was working on what was best for that land. Anyway. Molly, do you have anything from that meeting from last night that you wanted to say?
I'm all set.
Okay. Dr. Marcus?
No, I think the difference between cooperate and, and agree. So, I think we, the School Committee was very cooperative and, and tried, you know, to, to listen and, and be part of the decision. You know, ultimately, didn't agree. That's all, so.
Yeah, we just.
Cooperation was not, I mean, that was.
No, it really wasn't. It was just, considering that there was legal opinion in 2016, a letter stating, this is the land, this is what it's deeded for, for school purposes, and that's what it says, and, and that's it, and that's what it's going to remain, still being open five years later, when they come back again and saying, I'm like, sure, let's talk about it. What makes sense, makes sense. If it doesn't, it doesn't, but let's just talk about it. That's a lot more than in the past. So, I feel like I got crucified, and the School Committee is getting crucified for being willing to talk and cooperate and be open to any suggestions, but ultimately, trying to make the best decision that we feel for the children, the students, and the town, ultimately, for buildings.
Right.
Anyway. Thanks for bringing that up, Joe.
Hey, anytime. If I can help you out with that one.
Yeah. I forget about all these correspondence and stuff, and then you guys bring them up. Okay, so we have the acceptance of the minutes for March 9th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March 9th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Can you just hold on? Was that the one that I had? This one typo.
Okay.
This one where the, so, the regular meeting minutes, March 9th, the last page, page five, where it references the Stoughton Diversity and Inclusion, it says agency, it should be Stoughton Diversity and Inclusion Organization.
Okay.
That's my only change.
So, that's page five, third paragraph down. Great. Thank you. Well, and the spelling of my last name, take the E off of it, in that same paragraph. I know Katie probably wouldn't have did that.
Oh.
Yeah. It sounds the same either way, but, okay, so all in favor of the, as edited?
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye. And then, I think that we have one last correspondence that we wanted, other matters, that we have from Ms. Molly Cochrane.
This is my farewell speech.
So, it is, but we want to say that we're going to miss you. Molly is, this is her last School Committee meeting, and she was not running for reelection, and she has spent a lot of time volunteering for the Stoughton Public Schools and the town of Stoughton, and it was an absolute pleasure.
I just want to sort of start by thanking again the teachers and the administrators for giving my children an excellent education. They are, believe it or not, graduating college this year. And we're very well-prepared for college. Thank you to, to the Stoughton teachers. I have to express my appreciation for that. I want to appreciate and express my thank yous to the public for their trust and confidence in me, and it was, it was a wonderful opportunity to be given. I want to thank the administrators, Dr. Marcus, Mr. Ford, all the administrators I got to work with, and it was a pleasure getting to work with you and learn from you and learn over the years. And I honestly have to say, it's such a cliche, but it's an honor and a privilege to work with my fellow School Committee members. I am just in awe of your dedication, of your expertise, of your commitment to the students. I think we have a really high-functioning and, and excellent School Committee. I know not all towns are as lucky as that, where I think we all respect each other, even though we come from different places. And I just want to encourage people in the public to become engaged in, in local affairs, and come, and become engaged, become town meeting members, volunteer to serve on committees, run for School Committee. There's a whole bunch of different committees and boards in town that I think it's just very rewarding. I think it's great to be engaged. You meet some of the best people in town when you step forward and you try to engage in these affairs. And, and before I get off my soapbox, I just have to say, like, I think that's the way that we have to, civic engagement, working on local issues together. We can help our imperiled democracy by, you know, sort of crossing some of those bridges, coming together, working on local issues. I think that that is, you know, civic engagement is really going to make a big difference. So, I encourage everybody who hasn't done it yet to, to try to become more involved in what's going on in the town of Stoughton, because we need you. We need good people, and it is, it's very rewarding. I have certainly enjoyed my last six years, and have all the respect in the world for you guys, and optimism that this is going to continue to be a great school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
This is so sad. Stop laughing, Joe. Okay.
Scrooge.
We're going to miss you. All right. Okay, that's it. I know, Katie's sad. No more speeches ever again. Okay, so, it's very sad. Anyway, we are going to now adjourn, and again, just thank Molly Cochrane for all of her time that she's put into the Stoughton Public School District, and thank all of you for supporting her in all the two terms that she ran, and, and keeping her on, on the board, because she's been an asset. So, all right.
Thank you for all your big words that I had to Google when I went home.
We're so much smarter, having you here with your words. So, we're going to adjourn. We're going to be going into executive session. We will not be coming back into public session. In executive session, we'll be discussing the custodian COVID-19 impact bargaining, the food services COVID-19 impact bargaining, and the acceptance of the minutes for March 9th, 2021.
Motion to go into session?
Yes. All in favor?
Roll.
Roll call, sorry.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Good night.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Good night.